Supervisor Latini.
Here.
Supervisor Borst.
Here.
Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Schmider.
Here.
Supervisor Croninwetter.
Here.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Here.
Supervisor Partey.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen. Supervisor Don Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Enzlow.
Here.
And Supervisor Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Public hearings, we have no public hearings tonight. Open privilege of the floor, if anybody from the public would like to address the board, now would be the time. You can come up to the podium. Give us your name and where you're from, please. You have five minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Sue Feigley. I live in the village Waterloo in the town of Fayette. And I'm here about page twenty-eight in the packet this evening. It's about the Keuga Seneca Trail. First, I was wondering why MRB group was selected to do the survey. The 2020 Phase Two study was done by TY Lynn International and the LA Group. So there's a huge study on Phase Two done by a totally different group. So I was just curious and wondering why MRB was chosen for this particular study. If the full board does approve this motion this evening for this study, I was wondering when the talks are supposed to be resuming for Phase Two to move into the next part of that project. That is stated in the newspaper article that came out. And three, will, if you move into Phase Two, will you be utilizing the existing survey and study that was done back in 2022? Because that's a very comprehensive study. I just was wondering if that would be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a real good question. We already got it done, why are we doing it again?
Supervisor Jeff Trout.
I can't address the Phase Two, but in terms of this study, when we got together, the Canal Trail Group, it came to our attention that the part of the, the part of the trail that this is gonna study was due to the concerns over safety and welfare, the condition of the trail. There's a number of parts of it that are in disrepair. And basically, we've had a number of folks asked to use it for, you know, larger purposes than just their individual use. And through some concerns brought to our attention by Roy and others, because Roy always gets asked to moat it or, you know, clear it or whatever. We looked at it and Bob went with Pat Nicoletta from MRB to kind of review it, get an initial idea about what it would take to bring it up to speed so we make sure that we're in compliance with whatever we need to be in compliance with. That we did need a study that's more about the health, I don't wanna say the health, but the safety and condition of the trail as opposed to Phase Two expansion or anything like that.
Okay, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Croninwetter.
Yeah, this was, uh, this study that we're having coming up, that's on the existing trail that we have?
Yes, yep, it has nothing to do, right Jill or? It has nothing to do, yeah, thanks Dave.
Nothing to do with.
Nothing to do with expanding or anything else. This is just to make sure the current one is safe and is, I don't wanna say caught up, up to code and protects us that way. We did discover through some help, and I wanna thank, you know, all the folks who are on the committee. They did some wonderful work in terms of preparing for it, looking at it. And we actually discovered that it's actually used quite extensively.
Well, I'm all, I'm all for extending it and at our Chamber of Commerce presentation, it was like the third most visited spot in Seneca County.
I was surprised at just how.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Don Trout.
You know, the, the expansion part of it is quite complicated. And I'm happy that they're talking about, you know, just dealing with the existing one now, considering what, you know, we've dealt with in the past through legal problems. But, you know, expansion is very, very difficult. And I don't think that that's the greatest idea, you're right now, you know. But, you know, securing it and making sure it's available to the public and it's safe for what exists now is fantastic. That's good, you know. And expansion later on, I think, is probably not the right way to go considering the challenges that that presents.
Part of what, and I think, you know, Roy and County Attorney Etman and our risk manager and Jill and all these folks were working on is like proper signage, right? Looking at those, make sure it's clear, make sure it's mowed, make sure it's maintained.
I genuinely like that part of it.
Okay. Is there anybody else that hasn't spoke from the public that would like to address the board? Okay. All right, let's get, we got approval of the minutes for May fourteenth, 2024, May twenty-eighth, and a special emergency board meeting for June ninth.
So moved?
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Reports of, reports of special committees. Any special committee have anything they'd like to report on? Supervisor Shipley.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanna point out that the, the Regional Airport Advisory Committee will meet Wednesday night, tomorrow night. And I will have a briefing on what was discussed at the next regular board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Chairman's remarks, okay. Despite whatever may be in the news or whatever, I wanted to assure everybody present and maybe online or whatever that, you know, despite what's going on, no matter what, the county will move forward and continue to run as normal. Business as usual. We have a good group of leaders in this room that I feel confident in and will keep everything running as best we can. We have great department heads. We have a good staff here, so there's nothing to be concerned or be worried about. We will keep moving everything forward. Thank you. County Attorney, do you have anything tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. Communications?
Communications eighty-nine through one hundred and thirty-three have been recorded and filed.
Thank you very much. All right, first up, Ways and Means. Supervisor Partey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, Board of Supervisors accepts the fiscal year 2021 cybersecurity grant.
Support.
A second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Number thirteen.
Board of Supervisors authorizes the amendments to the 2024 Seneca County IT budget.
Support.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number fourteen.
Chairman of the Seneca County Board of Supervisors is authorized and directed to renew the contract with Toshiba for leasing and maintaining multi-function copiers and printers.
Support.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Number fifteen.
Chairman of the Seneca County Board of Supervisors is authorized and directed to enter into a contract with Toshiba for eFAX.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number hang on a second, I got inserts here. Number sixteen, Supervisor Partey.
Board of Supervisors adopts the resolution to introduce proposed local law D of the year 2024 to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law section three dash C.
Support.
Got a second?
Second.
Discussion? Supervisor Partey.
I move to amend this resolution as follows. In the second resolved paragraph, the date of the public hearing shall be changed to July nine, 2024, in place of June eleven, 2024.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Sixteen again, and sixteen as amended. Go ahead Supervisor Partey.
Okay, Board of Supervisors adopts the resolution to introduce proposed local law D of the year 2024 to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law section three dash C as amended.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number seventeen, Supervisor Partey.
Board of Supervisors authorizes the finance department to pay mortgage tax.
Support.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number eighteen.
Board of Supervisors authorizes the appropriation of information technology reserve funds to purchase surface pros for border supervisor operations.
Support.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number nineteen.
Board of Supervisors authorizes amendments to the 2024 Seneca County budget.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Number twenty.
Board of Supervisors accepts the second statewide expansion of the Hural Herring Reform Grant from the Office of Indigenous Legal Services.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-one.
Board of Supervisors authorizes amendments to the 2024 Seneca County budget to support the state mandated preschool program.
Support.
Got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Number twenty-two, Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors authorized 2023 budget adjustment for the increase in CHIPS funding for a Seneca County highway.
Support.
Support? Yeah, perfect. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Twenty-three Supervisor Reinhardt.
Board of Supervisors approves Seneca County office building improvements and renovations.
Support.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-four Supervisor Borst.
Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of a mental health clinical therapist positions in the mental health department.
Support.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-five Supervisor Borst.
Proclamation and recognition of a big fire December fifth, nineteen thirteen, in the village of Lodi, Seneca County, New York.
Support. What is that?
Got a second?
Support.
Awesome, thank you. Any discussion?
What is it?
Supervisor Don Trout.
Just what is that? A big fire.
Historic event.
Is it hot?
Something the town requested.
All right.
Any more discussion?
Sounds like having a big fire.
No. No.
Ain't much left to burn.
Oh, there's plenty to burn though, huh?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-six Supervisor Borst.
Board of Supervisors appoint Daniel Smazel to Director of Water and Sewer Services.
Support. Support.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-seven Supervisor Borst.
Board of Supervisors appoint Julie Bub to Director of Finance.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-eight.
Board of Supervisors appoint Tom Kornoschak. Is that correct? As Board, as Director of Weights and Measures.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, number twenty-nine Supervisor Hayes, you're up.
Thank you very much. Board of Supervisors approve changes in water rates for Seneca County Water District Number One and call for a public hearing.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? Supervisor Hayes.
I need to amend Water Sewer Resolution twenty-nine as follows. Second resolved paragraph, the date of the public hearing shall be changed from July ninth, 2024, in place of June eleventh, 2024.
Support.
Got a second on that? Perfect. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Supervisor Hayes again, number twenty-nine. As amended?
Yes, Board of Supervisors approves change in
Support.
As amended, thank you.
Second.
Got a second, perfect. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Supervisor Hayes, number thirty.
Resolution approving the proposed increase in the maximum estimated cost of proposed improvements to Seneca County Sewer District Number Two sewer facilities.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number thirty-one Supervisor Hayes.
Board Resolution authorizes the issuance of an additional eight million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars serial bond of the
Support.
There you go.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Was unanimous vote, yep. Thank you.
We have minus one though, right?
Right, amendment was present.
He'd vote for it too. He loves water and sewer.
You sure?
He's on a
Especially when they give us money.
Well-deserved vacation. Okay.
Let's go back and amend.
Number thirty-two Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seneca County Board of Supervisors approves the release of funds in the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars in the grant for the Seneca Falls Historical Society for the eighteen forty-eight Women's Rights Convention.
Support.
Support? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number thirty-three Supervisor Jeff Trout.
The Board of Supervisors agreed to engage MRB Group to conduct an engineering survey and condition assessment of the Keuga Seneca Canal Trail and to provide repair and improvement recommendations with estimate cost projections, estimated cost projections.
Support, with the understanding it's not for the expansion.
Correct.
Right. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number thirty-four Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Board of Supervisors hereby appoint the following members of the Seneca County Planning Board.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thirty-five Supervisor Trout.
The Board of Supervisors adopts the Seneca County Housing Trust Fund Program Guidelines Application and Approval Process that you'll find a hard copy on your desk.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay. Any unfinished business? Do you have any unfinished business? Okay, new business. Supervisor Don Trout, Rule twenty-nine.
I would like to enact a Rule twenty-nine for any resolutions and motions that might be under such rule for the county.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion on the Rule twenty-nine? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Okay, we got first item number two under the Rule twenty-nine. Supervisor Borst.
A letter of support from New York State Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance approving Seneca Division of Human Services. The proposal to apply for a supplemental nutrition assistance program, process and technology improvement grant requesting three hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and twenty cents for a three-year grant.
Support.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Uh, let's see here, number three Supervisor Borst.
Board of Supervisors consent to extend county workers' compensation coverage to tire fire company.
Support.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Okay, we got number four under the Rule twenty-nine. Supervisor Borst.
Seneca County Board of Supervisors appoints Kyle Black as off-track betting director to complete the term due to the resignation of Richard Ricky.
Support.
Second. Any discussion?
I have something.
Supervisor Schmider.
He volunteered, but did we see if anybody else was interested or how does that work? We, we put out something that there was an opening there or do we just? Did he volunteer that he knew? Shouldn't it be fair to put it out for the public to see if anybody else in the county was interested?
You could definitely make a call for that. That was the letter of resignation from Mr. Ricky, recommended his appointment. But, you know, it's up to this board to appoint it, so this board can definitely change if see fits or make an amendment.
Yeah, I think generally we would have done that, but being that Mr. Ricky resigned, we're without a person to represent us, so I thought we, we thought it was kind of time appropriate to put somebody into place so we had representation. Generally, we would put out an advertisement, you know, like normal, but this is the reason that we're kind of rushing this through.
He's just taking his recommendation.
Yep.
And Tom Foxes. And Tom Foxes.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Want to pose, let the record state.
Chairman, we still need to do page thirty-four, Rule twenty-nine.
I'm sorry, did I skip that?
Yep.
Oh, we were on, we were on number four.
Yeah, I just didn't number that one, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wait.
Wait a minute.
No, that's part of the other ones. No, it's okay.
Okay. Hey, confusing me here, okay, I thought we were good. All right. That motion passed, okay. I think that is, yeah, okay. Yep, Rule twenty-nine, number five. Rule, under Rule twenty-nine, number five.
Resolution authorize the submission of New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIA, grant application and a New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Clean Water Safe, or State
Support.
Revolving Fund and engine application.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution authorize the submission of a New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIA, grant application and a New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Clean Water State Revolving Fund Finance Application.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Supervisor Hayes, are you continuing?
That's it.
That's it. Okay, that was the last one, yeah. Just for clarity, do we?
Do we do the septic one? Your septic one, right?
For septic and Lynn Porter.
Lynn Porter.
Yeah, I thought, because they got posted, they're not hang on for one second, everybody, bear with us. No.
You got different numbers?
You got the lucky one, I got the bad one, I guess. Okay.
Yeah, my electronic ends at thirty-five.
I know I got the message back there.
See that one?
I know.
They are in the paper copies.
They get the, they're green.
Oh, they're out of the numbers. Okay.
Well, they're in the packet at least.
On the track betting. I don't think we did that one.
Yeah, we did that.
We gotta put you off twice.
Three, two, two, three, four.
No, it's only on thirty-five.
It's all number difference.
I don't think we did.
These are the one, two, three.
Are we, we're missing an appointment, is that the one we're missing?
Let me see, I've got them in order here. There were four resolutions. One was to accept public health emergency preparedness grant. And then there was an associated one to sign a service agreement with our preparedness consultant Kathy Bond.
Oh, yeah, do Kathy Bond, yeah.
And then we had one to accept two hundred thousand dollars from the state DEC for septic funding. And then the final one was to a, a new appointment to our Board of Health.
Okay, one, once
You're all kind of time
No, they are time sensitive. I know you spoke to me on it, and I know I forwarded them on to be added on, but I think they just got
Hang on.
Hang on one second.
They're in the paper copies.
And they're paper.
They're in the paper copies.
Number four, we're starting to
We're just out of order a little bit, but they're there. He's pulling with these numbers, I don't see the numbers on the electronic covers. Yes, we'll get there.
Emergency Preparedness Consultant.
Technical difficulties with paper.
I'll try to be brief when it's my turn to speak to make up the difference.
Do you have the resolutions in front of you, Scott?
I do, and they're in the printed packet.
Yep, I guess we got.
I think they start on page thirty-one.
One more. The appointment of Lynn Porter. No, I don't think we did.
We had that in the packet, Lynn Porter.
They're in the papers. They just weren't added to
Okay.